Good evening, we are going to call this meeting to order. The time is now 6:06. If you would please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Ms. Meeley, if you would leave us, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Kanata, if you would please call the roll.
Ms. Chaney. Mr. Gay.
Here.
Ms. Mercer.
Here.
Ms. Meeley.
Here.
Ms. Parker. Ms. Nancy Rodriguez. Ms. Sandra Connelly.
Here.
Mr. Sanders.
Here.
Dr. Sims.
Here.
Ms. Nicole Rodriguez.
Here. Thank you. And if we could please have a moment of meditation and please keep in your thoughts the family of Carmen Jacino. Thank you. It is now time for public participation. I have one person who has signed up to address the board. Ms. Marie Catigan. If you would please come and state your name and address for the record.
Marie Catigan, 37 Harrison Street. I'm here today to talk about Lincoln School in general. At the beginning of the school year, they had five teachers. Now it moved down to four. Pretty disappointing in that classrooms are now about 27 to 29 per classroom. It's ridiculous. I thought we're just, we're starting to move ahead and we're having another setback. The student needs are not being fulfilled. They're not getting the attention that they need to grow to the best of their ability. We all know smaller classrooms are linked to everything from higher task force and reduction of behavior issues, higher teacher morale. It just attributes to basically everything positive. Also, I'm here because the lunch break is 20 minutes. Lincoln is a very big school. Depending which grade, you're going to have 100 to 125. You have to feed them. It takes about five to 10 minutes to feed them depending on what they serve on the menu. Many of our students depend on our meals to get by and that's basically five to 10 minutes, maybe 15, because they have to clean up to eat. And you're teaching children bad habits. They have to rush. Of course, they're going to pick their favorites. They're going to grab the chocolate milk. They're going to grab whatever they have, but they're not really given the nutrition that they need. The lunch block is just too short, in my opinion. Maybe reduce the recess. Instead of 30 minutes, back to 20 so the children can get those extra time. Also, I'm saddened to hear now all the fifth grade team don't want to participate in separate reading groups. From my experience at Lincoln, each teacher takes a different grade level, reading level, and they split it up between Lincoln. Not all the teachers on board, so they're not doing it. So one teacher will have to try to figure out how to do their reading time. Even if she breaks down to one group per day or takes small guided reading groups per day in that one hour, I'm not sure whether there are reading block period. It's still not going to be enough. Ever since my son is in kindergarten, he's always been a high learner in reading. He's like ridiculous in it. He always been in a separate group when he was younger in kindergarten, first grade. Always moved him up to a different level, a different grade level. And this year, he's staying in the classroom. So I don't know how they're going to figure it out. I talked to his teacher and she says she's on board with the separate reading groups, but not currently everybody is. Also, some positive about Lincoln is they are separating the math groups this year in fifth grade, and I really appreciate that. And the STEAM slowly, it's slowly moving, honestly. My son has some positive reactions coming home and sometimes negative. He feels like he's not being pushed enough. We do, he does have experience with STEAM because we go to, Microsoft has classes all year long, so he does that. And then the YMCA, they have STEAM classes. So he's been doing that for a good two to three years. And they also have STEAM summer camp. So he's used to that environment and he feels like it's not really pushing him. But I also told him since the beginning of the school year, everybody's still learning. So that's it. And also, we need to improve in communication between the Board of Ed, the school administrators, the parents and guardians. A lot of our parents say they don't receive the information because they're not on Facebook, especially over the summer. Lincoln does, I would say, a weekly connect call, so that kind of helps. And they do it in English and Spanish. But a lot of our Polish parents get left behind. And also, when I look at your agenda, like, I just see a lot of approved stuff. If there's some maybe somewhere on your website, we can see the subcommittees, what you guys are talking about, so we can have a better understanding. If there is one, can you please show me the link? Because I can't seem to find it. And that's about it. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Could you please provide your email to Mr. Kanata so that he would be able to share that information with you?
Sure.
Thanks. And also, just for the roll call for the members who are absent. Ms. Chaney is out of town. Ms. Parker is recovering, and we're wishing her well wishes. And Ms. Rodriguez was unavailable this evening. Superintendent, it is time for your report.
Thank you. Just going to talk briefly. And Mr. Kanata, I didn't know if you could just pull up the communication that we just gave to all the teachers today. I'm sorry I didn't tell you.
Internal staff portal.
Yeah, the internal staff portal. Just going to talk a little bit about the work we've been doing again. It's, you know, we've built something and now we're just taking feedback. We did have our first NBU day for K8 today. The high school has been on the weekly schedule, ninth and 10th grade, since the beginning of the school year. We just really onboarded. This is our first go-live day. Got really good feedback from the teachers that were there. It was facilitated at this point. Our admins, I know one of the admins stopped in, but this is really being run right now by central office, so the building administrators are in the building and ensuring that all is going well in the building. They'll slowly transition themselves over there over time. So it was a positive first day, good feedback. And we do have exit questions that we ask each week. The high school hasn't done that yet. We're going to put them on. Also, while Mr. Kanata brings this up, we have, I say we loosely, it was really Mr. Kanata, developed this internal portal. And I did communicate to all staff yesterday, and I think you were probably in on that communication as well, that it's really just for teachers and paras and all the staff only, and they can go right to this portal. Thanks to our Department of Academics, they created a really nice Excel that just shows, here's the day, here's what day it is, if it's A-Day, B-Day, C-Day, or J-Day. They know what day it is and they know exactly who's coming out. So it's like an ongoing calendar that adjusts, it will adjust itself for snow days, et cetera. Tell me when it's up, because this is really what I wanted to show you tonight. The other thing that I did hand out to all of you is the brochure. And this came from, this started last May. You should all, it's a colored brochure. You don't have one?
Here.
And we only print out in color for the most important people here. But, you know, we have, they're expensive. But this was a Q&amp;A that started last May with just teachers and different stakeholder groups asking questions. And so we put this together. This was vetted through Cross Union. We worked on this this summer with them. So really, both unions were involved with the creation of this or the revisions of this. And that's really about it. You're showing that right now, but I want to just take them to the portal because that's... So here is, here is the portal map. Do you want to talk about it a little bit so I don't butcher it?
Yeah. So this was the internal staff portal that we just launched today. And this is, as Superintendent Sarah said, this is just for staff only. So administrators, paras, teachers, support staff, et cetera. You have to be logged in into your CSDB staff account to gain access to this page. It's not open to the general public. So on the main page here, it's structured just like our main regular page, except the story is tailored towards staff. So we have this, our booklet. This booklet that Superintendent Sarah talked about, we released it to the teachers first. This has been released to families. It was supposed to be posted up tonight to social media and the website. It was going to go later tonight and tomorrow. And families are going to be seeing the same thing. Their booklet is going to end right here. This extra stuff is for staff, teachers, administrators, and so forth. So families will be getting a very similar booklet. As I mentioned, this main booklet has stories tailored to staff. On the right side here, you have the school schedule like we have on the main page, the important information tailored to staff, just the latest news from around the district that we post up. More news and notes on the bottom, upcoming events. Superintendent Sarah talked about this feedback form, which I'll get to in a second. Up top here is navigation tailored towards staff. We have New Britain University. All the information that's in that booklet, we posted to the website as well for easy access, enrichment and innovation as well. Power School, Quicklink, staff resources, et cetera. Superintendent Sarah mentioned the NBU schedule rotation. So this is just embedded on the website here so staff can easily access it and see where they're going to go. Thank you to Ms. Bulkey for working on this. She's here so much.
I see you're undercover.
Yes. So you can see on the left side, it's a day number for the school day, the actual day, what day it is, what day it is of the week in terms of STEAM and enrichment, and then who's going and what the theme is. And every day, we just knock off a day, so the latest day is up top there. Let me go to the survey form here. I'm not logged in, but if you were to go on, I'll type it in here. You can see that we have a bunch of questions.
And the questions will change as we get more into the year. Right now, they're really just asking not really deep questions.
So you can see here, this is logistic questions. We're going to apply for everything because that's what it should be.
We owe you for.
Next page is collaboration questions. What they learned and what they collaborated on during NBU time. And we started gathering data today from the first group, and we'll be gathering data throughout each session of NBU.
I'm going to jump in here, too. So, you know, we've begun our meeting back in May, I think, with the Cross Union team. And so really, the comments and the feedback that come from the teachers during their sessions are going to be the very topics that we talk about at Cross Union. And I know last week, we had some communication. I know that some of our board members were, some of our teachers reached out to them, and I understand that, and that's good. But for me, the Cross Union is to solve the problems in real time of things that are coming up. And that we have to change our practices of circumventing process. You know, if we have a problem, we have to bring it to the table. And for me, it's about being solution focused this year and being able to come to the table saying, I think we have a problem here. I have a potential solution. Or we put our heads together. We're not there yet. It takes a while to change habits, but I know that we will get there. And for me, the teachers filling that out. And just having this right here saves teachers and all staff from having to look through emails all the time to say, where was that information? So any important information, that doesn't have to be email, will be put up on that website so they have access to it right there. Questions? That's really it for the week. We are, we have our schedules cleared cabinet that's today from 3 to 6 because we are at NBU. I know that tomorrow we go live with, tomorrow is B-Day. And we have our elementary starting in, and we also have middle school. So there will be, the classrooms will be used down at New Britain High School at the NBU five-classroom suite down there. Yeah, I was just trying to think. I go to have soccer game on Friday. I do have to say our boys varsity looked great. They did a great job. Our high school, the football team, did great. You need to come up this Friday night because they're playing Sutton. They're also 4-0. And yes.
And vote for it to be the top game of the week. It's currently 44, and the other game is 47. I'm not happy about that.
So with the coaches' wishes, they are always... Oh, they are. Okay. So it should be an exciting game.
It will.
We're red. We're your Cardinal red. I saw that. I did see that, yes.
See it right there.
That's it.
Thank you very much. Okay. Committee reports. So let's do operations and finance. Anything you want to highlight?
So we are getting a donation, $1,355 for, from American Chemical Society, which we love to take in money. It's always good. We did have a good session with Mr. Moore and curriculum. Like, we just talked about things that we have instituted in the past and where they are with them. I want to say GoDaddy, but it's not GoDaddy. What is it called, dude?
School Dude.
School Dude. GoDaddy's a website.
It's a host.
It's a host. So it was a pretty productive meeting, I think.
Personnel. I know she's not Dr. Dr. Seaver. I don't know if she has anything. She will talk to her. There's nothing really exciting happening there. And then policy. I conceived of our letters and I was like, this is not going anywhere.
We had a number of policies come out of Policy Committee that are later on the agenda that we'll be reviewing. Additionally, there was another policy that we asked Matt to email out, and he did, on our statement of equity inequality and all of that. And if board members could review that and give any feedback, we're looking to bring that to the board next meeting. This meeting, since there was already a good bit on there. We also looked at one item that's on the consent agenda, and that is the memorandum of understanding between the district and Mr. and Mrs. Butler. And that is a program that will allow some of our students to get some sort of elementary teaching experience. And they're providing a lot of funding to make that happen, and basically paid internships. They're funding paid internships for our students within the district. So not necessarily a donation per se, but definitely glad to have those partnership dollars coming in.
Excellent. And curriculum is going to be held as a federal, but there is an audit coming of the curriculum, right?
Right. So we didn't have our current curriculum meeting because we were waiting on the fact that a big curriculum audit is happening this month in October. But we ended up calling a special meeting for next week, Wednesday, 6:00 p.m. And that will be about the NWVA testing.
Excellent. Committee board reports. Your games are not...
I'd say show up and be loud Friday.
Show up and be loud Friday. No worries.
Be loud Friday.
Yes, sir. Actually, I would like to point out that, you know, for the past several years, I've been doing the doll's markets for the games, and I've seen the attendance increase significantly. And I think this year is probably the most I've ever seen. I was quite in awe of the last game, the amount of students and parents. So it's encouraging. I think I mentioned this to Superintendent Sarah about the school morale being up in general, bonfire last year, and I'm really excited for that to come up this year as well. So it's just exciting to see the boosted morale throughout the high school, anyway.
Excellent. All right. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. Are there any items, please, per group, see if there's any items you would like to take? Wonderful. I know. Next, we have new business. And the first is operations, approve the bidway purchase order for the equipment of the New Britain High School auditorium. May I have a motion?
Second.
Discussion.
I just have a question through you to Mr. Kane. I notice that this is being paid for out of the high school rental fees fund. Is that a separate fund, similar to like our cafeteria fund, where the money must be used for?
Well, it's a special revenue fund, so it never closes. So those revenues have been built up over the years with the fund balance. There's really two funds. One's a rental fund. It's for the high school, but it's really for the whole school district. The other one really pertains to the, I want to say, the theater, where the revenues are raised in, raised through theater productions. It pays for the students that work at the theater and some other things. So there's really two funds, and they're both rental funds. They used, at one time, they were together. Now we separate them. But they're special revenue funds. On the city's financial books, it showed up as a rental fund, as one. But they're two separate funds.
Just to follow up. So because it's a special revenue fund, this is like the type of thing that it would be used for, and it's not like something we could pull from to pay for a teacher or something else?
No, I mean, it'd be used for capital expenditures related to the high school or throughout the school system. It could also be used at times when the special program's going in and you're paying your custodians OT or extra earnings. Those funds can be expended for that use, if, you know, if we're paying them out of local, they can be paid out of this fund instead.
But for production, not for something random like...
Well, no. If I'm renting out one of the schools, you know, for whatever reason.
So say for a tournament, it's a, but it's still a rental thing.
It's a rental. So if I'm renting out, you know, let's say Vance for, their gymnasium for two hours, because I have a bunch of friends that, you know, want to use it. We get together every week, and the custodian has to work two to three hours. The money I pay in can be paid out, the cover part of that portion can be paid.
And I did have a question, based on the meeting we had. Do you, were you able to look up what was in that fund today?
Well, I kind of, after we were at the meeting, I was looking at it. The answer is, I believe at the end of last year, I think there was approximately $185 between the two funds.
And we don't know what we spent out of their year. I'm just wondering. I mean, it's a big, worthy purchase.
Yeah, so for instance, as of last year, the fund balance for the smaller one had about $20,000, the larger one had $165,000. We haven't been spending anything out of the larger one for several years. Small one, student workers and some other little things like that.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, just one other question. This is for bringing in all new equipment. This is, even though it's coming out of a rental fund, this is where replacing existing equipment, updating existing equipment on a permanent basis, I believe.
That's my understanding. And Mr. Smeldy's here. If you have questions regarding exactly what it is, I'm sure you can answer.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So anybody have a specific question, or did you just want to briefly summary?
I guess the question was, the item being purchased, it's for a replacement or a new item?
This is a new purchase, new technology for the theater. It's a third avenue of technology career in the theater world. We have lighting, sound, and this will be video. And quick summary, this is a large-scale display screen for the stage. So we can display up there's, for instance, our complication, we usually have a PowerPoint presentation. Instead of having the projector down front, it'll just be displayed on the screen now with no projector. So it's an LED television.
So it's not replacing the drop-drum projector, it's just an additional?
I'm going to eliminate that screen.
Correct. So it's not, so it's, it's not that it's replacing it, but it's new tech. New tech to do a similar job.
Exactly. We do not currently have an LED display on the stage. It's a projector and a screen.
Which is, which is great.
As old as the school.
We could do drive-in movies outside. Thank you, sir. Anybody else have any questions? Thank you. All in favor, so if I'm saying aye. Those opposed? Thank you. Next on the list, operations approved, changes to the district calendar for NBHS SAT day and capstone presentations.
Motion to adopt the new calendar as presented in our packet.
Second.
Discussion.
Can somebody outline what the actual change was from? Mr. Forn, can you answer that one?
The SAT has been changed by one week, so the first day on the calendar was fobbed by one week. We traditionally needed two half-days for capstone. There was only one built into the original calendar, so we added a second half-day for the high school day for capstone presentations, which is what we've done since we started doing it.
And the dates are March 27, 2019, correct? And 5:15 and 5:22.
Right. I believe we're eliminating a half-day a week earlier than the March date and changing to 27 because SAT changed.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
For those who have dates, you have the...
I think you asked one. You have one, right?
I was just, since we're approving a calendar, and I get this every year afterwards, was just making sure that this doesn't conflict with E, which is important for 20% of our...
Yes. We appreciate your diligence, sir.
I'm, of course, trying to figure out.
What day is Wednesday? Have you spelled it?
D-I-D.
It's based on a lunar calendar, so it changes from year to year, which, you know, about all of us. There's June 5th and August 12th. So what's June 5th?
June 5th is, oh, Wednesday. And nothing, nothing special is happening. No capstone, no nothing. So observing it for reasons would not hinder the action. And what was the other date?
August. Oh, yeah, August 10th.
All those in favor, so if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you very much. And thank you for your due diligence on that. I appreciate that. And C, appropriate school building projects, may I have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you. Okay. So there are three parts to this. Do you want to just have Mr. Moore give us a brief?
Yes, we don't have any...
Mr. Moore, if you would, can you give us a brief overview of our...
The superintendent and I met with the mayor and her finance team on September 5th, and they requested that we assist them in a cash flow issue that they're having. We came up with a schedule of closing out our projects, and we're closing these two projects out and submitting a cash reimbursement for Gaffney School, for Smalley School. On October 10th, the superintendent and I will be entering all of the closeout information and cash reimbursement for Smalley School using the new software at the state.
Okay. Is this timeframe on time?
This is the schedule that we came up with. We said we would follow this schedule, and we're still on schedule.
Perfect. Okay. I have a quick question.
Mr. Moore, can you talk about the school building meetings that you hold monthly?
Yeah, every month, on the third, on Wednesday of every month, we have a school building committee meeting. And it's open to the public. We send notices out, and you're all welcome to come. We can send notices out to all members of the Board of Education as well. They are sent over to the city hall, and members of the common council have shown up for, to Board of Ed, to school building committee meetings. So we'll include Board of Ed in an email notice for meetings.
And we also had two meetings this noon at 6 o'clock. Was it noon and at 6?
They meet at noon and again at 6:00. Yeah, they meet at noon and again at 6 o'clock to meet the ordinance requirement for time of a formal meeting.
Just to make it...
It used to be just during the day, right?
And then they changed the ordinance requirement, no meeting shall start before 6 o'clock.
Excellent.
Mr. Moore, I just had a quick question regarding closing out the Gaffney School project, I did have constituent come to me with some concerns about some existing HVAC issues still at the school, disclosing this how preclude us from seeking to get those remedied if they existed from the...
No, the HVAC issue that we encountered, where all the humidity that we're having at the beginning of September and the second week in September, was the air conditioning was cooling the building off so quickly that we were getting humidity buildup in there. After meeting with our programmer and our HVAC consultants, we came up with a program patch that we think will adjust this humidity buildup by slowing down the, the Gaffney School is extremely energy efficient.
It's too energy efficient, is that?
Yeah, it is so tight that the air conditioning doesn't keep coming on frequently, you're required to bring 25 to 30% of outside air in at all times, when you have a high dew point and a high humidity outside, you're bringing in all of this outside air, you need to bring the outside air in to get air exchanges for fresh oxygen and eliminate the CO2, so you have to bring in outside air and it was creating high humidity issues, this is not uncommon in any building that is a closed building. A lot of buildings are experiencing same issue, so we made a patch, the next day it eliminated dehumidity and we think we've addressed that situation.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, Mr. Moore? Yes, sir?
Real quick, the Gaffney, now that's been completed for a while, I know there was some discussion about why this wasn't closed out, but it's my understanding that this was because of the software changeover at the state level, and I just wanted to confirm whether that was the case and now we're able to close that out, and it's also my understanding too, you can answer both questions or kind of questions, is that this new program at the state level is going to allow for faster reimbursement on these closeouts of these projects. I'll answer those questions, the delay in closing it out originally started with one of the contractors, the site contractor at Gaffney School wasn't satisfied with it, we couldn't agree to amount paid for a change order, we ended up in mediation that took about a year to settle, and then we had to get all of the paperwork completed and set up, now the city's anxious to close it out. When, then I wanted to start entering all of the information to close out the project, they closed down the old software and they brought up the new software and it really starts today, October 1st, and we're having a training session on October 10th, and we're bringing up all of the information to close out these, to enter information for these three projects on the 10th, between 10 and noon.
I do have a question, what, so how long was the gap where there was no operating software?
Yeah, I don't have the exact, from the time that I started, wanted to get into the system, and then I called and said, why can't I get in, it was about three weeks before they said it'll come up on October 1. So, I got an email back from DAS.
You don't turn one off until you turn one on, that just seems a little...
The new one won't be available until October 1.
And without changing, you can't use it till October 1, so. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Moore? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Those opposed?
Can I ask Dr. Tucker?
I can't see behind the podium, so I don't see anybody else. No, okay, thank you, sir. All right, can I have a motion for? Yes, thank you.
Well, just take a minute.
For the second reading, D3H.
Well, I was about to say, I'd like to make a motion on numbers or letters D, E, and F as a group, these are two sets of graduation requirements, as well as a new policy dealing with the seal of bi-literacy, motion to bring those up for discussion.
Second.
And I just wanted to say, we're looking to revise our graduation requirements to allow for us to use the seal, to have the seal of bi-literacy, which the state approved, we'll also be looking into whether or not we can retroactively grant it to students who may have been eligible at the end of last year, once the policy is adopted, the new policy is just outlining basically the language from the state, which is what tests that they allow to be used to prove bi-literacy, so those are just some very easy revisions. The board could, if the board wishes to put off for a second, that would be fine by me, we're still well enough out from graduation this year, but I think we are...
We have time, we have time.
We have time until the next meeting, as I can bring you. But I do, I would like us to at least in the interim, look into the possibility of retroactively granting it to those who are able to show that they met the requirements, so just wanted to mention that.
I do have a question, do we have any idea if there, how many there may be?
I believe Ms. Sims was in talk with Ms. Cassidy, you had...
Well, last year I had asked the question, and you was on that too, I don't remember the number off the top of my head, it was a single digit number?
And it still was.
Yeah, there were definitely students who would have qualified under the guidelines, yes.
So, if the board's okay, I'd make a motion to postpone those three items to our next meeting.
Can we put those up here? Signify, all those in favor, we're postponing till the next meeting for a second reading, signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Can I add those to the agenda for next meeting, that would be great.
Motion to approve a new policy 1110 dot point four, automated calls, text messages, and auto notification systems, robocalls.
Second.
Again, this is just bringing us up with the compliance and putting out there what our policy is, and just sort of also providing the references for the community members as to why we can do these notifications and the exceptions it falls under per FCC guidelines and all of that, and also gives us some pretty clear stipulations as to what we will and will not use it for, it's supposed to be for education, education, things that are reasonably education related, we can't advertise my fungos, we can't advertise for, you know, other businesses in town.
But community events and things like that. Family participation, we can't.
Exactly, so that's all, just getting something on the books.
Does it have, just a, because this is a, this is a new policy, does it have the steps in which to get something approved for these things?
No, it does not, that's definitely something we could add and bring to the, bring to the board for the next meeting and do an amendment.
Because I'm thinking if I were a community agency, which sometimes I do, I have to the community agency to say, I want to advertise my event, it's a family event, how do I do that, and there's paperwork and things that they need to do in order to get it done, so that'd be helpful to have it there, because I don't know where else you would put it. So, how to, I guess?
How to daddy?
That'd be a reasonable addition, I think we could go from a draft and add it for next, for next meeting.
Any other discussion?
Just thinking if we add something like that, it's probably a good idea to kind of make that known outside of the policy, maybe on the website, you know, because, yeah, no one peruses policy.
They don't, but then if, they only peruse it when it's not working, and then they say, no one told me, and you're like, I don't know. But yes, I think that is, that's beneficial, because usually what I do is, people ask, I say, to the person who, but it's a question.
Right, right, so it just seems like something that would be frequently if we had the...
So, a form, we have a form then? For robocalls or for, I know there's one for distribution of flyers and things like that. Super communications man, all right. Bringing back the professional, this one. Any other questions?
Motion to postpone that policy till our next agenda, till, until our next meeting.
Signify by, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. And just to be clear, we're signifying to postpone this until our next meeting and adding the how to. Perfect.
I think that would be an admin thing, admin reg. Yeah.
Or, or make an admin reg, because there's probably not an admin reg for this one.
Which would just be a form, yeah.
Exactly, so to have the form. So, it would probably just reference the form and might have the form on this.
Done it.
Yes. Okay, policy 5145 point 53, transgender and gender non-performing students and staff, motion to?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
I'd just like to say, I urge the board members to look this over, if you have any questions, I'm more than willing to discuss it with anybody, this is an issue I'm very passionate about and very relatively knowledgeable on, I think it's important that we give a good framework for teachers to handle what's a very difficult topic, but one that's becoming more and more relevant in schools, and so I think we do a disservice if we don't have a policy like this on the books that at least gives teachers some guidance on how to handle what can be potentially very difficult situations. So, I really urge people to look it over, we had a lot, I think we had a lot of meaningful discussions in policy about this, because it is a very difficult topic to discuss.
So, are we motion to approve or are we motion for a second?
Time to postpone.
That's a long one.
Yeah, motion to approve.
Yeah, well, we motion to approve.
Right, and then when you can motion during the discussion, which then you can vote on a motion to postpone. Motion to postpone for this, for a second reading till the next board meeting, right? That was on the table, and then the second was by Mr. Kay, all those in favor, postponing till the next meeting, signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Excellent. All right, do not see, so we will move down to, all of this is, for the most part, we were removing Kay, correct?
I thought they were going to come to give an update, but...
But Kay, can we remove?
Yeah, I brought a draft of what I was... Yeah, I can just write.
Okay, so executive session then.
Yep, I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session regarding items J and K.
Can you just say aye?
Can you say aye?
Do that, if he comes, I mean, you don't...
So, we will, we will, motion to go into executive session regarding items J and K, and it will be for the board, and just, I believe, just Ms. Sarah.
All those, do you have a second? Do we do anything else, Benford? There is nothing else after this.
Nothing else, so.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Those opposed?